Good evening. As a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I am the current Chair for the Newberry Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Here.
Thank you, sir. George Morse.
He had to step away.
Okay, very good. Leslie Matthews.
Here.
Hello, Leslie. Woody Knight.
Here.
Thank you, Woody. Mary Stone.
She's saying that she's not allowed to unmute. I just asked her to unmute, and hopefully that will help.
Okay, beautiful. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative as well. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Martha, Emily Noble.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Wireless Communications Consultant, David Maxon, are you on?
He's not here yet.
Okay, anticipated speakers, Stephen Will. Eric McLean.
Not yet, not yet.
Steve Sawyer.
Not yet.
Okay, Mark DiPiero. I saw Mark.
Yep, Mark's here.
Okay, beautiful. Good evening. This is March 2, 2022. This open meeting of the Newberry Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020, order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until April 1, 2022. This order suspends the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newberry Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to zoom.us and entering meeting ID 8327413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering meeting ID when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and the attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcasted live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at tnctv.org and our recording will be available through the Newberry Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As a Chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I'll put down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds with earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a manner that helps generate accurate. Please be aware that video participants can see you're in and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until a yield and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during our public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand when it appears, please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions, like your name. For telephone participants, will raise your Zoom meeting by hitting star nine on your phone keypad. I will announce questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called up on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representatives the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for questions. I will then continue down the list of the raise hand column and again afford the participant, applicant, representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical electronics submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant, applicant, representatives will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Each vote tonight on this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Okay, that takes care of what I need to do. And let me just kind of pull up our agenda, which is going to be over here. All right, so first on our agenda is our February 22 financial report. I think I have that overview. For the planning board financial report for February 2022, payroll invoices are authorized. Number one, payroll warrants for the planning director and planning men for PR 22-17 for pay period ending to 12/22, PR 22-18 for pay period ending to 26/22. And for planning board expenses, the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad for two, two. Two, 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 two. Thanks, Martha. That's enough Tuesday for me. All right, that takes care of that. So we'll kind of go through our reports. So let's start with our liaison report from the select board. Leslie.
Select board last night. Well, it had been canceled last week, and so this was a makeup for them. They talked about a few different items. There was a very generous labor donation from Bob Connors to help finish off the floor at the police station in the amount of $20,000 worth of labor to secure the all of the papers, the, the, that we, the, the personal, the, the files of Newbury to put into a secure location. And then the other larger part was the discussion about two amendments, two things about Lark and Road and that the, it looks that they approved for the to move forward to build the culvert, to repair the bridge, and then next week it'll move on to a different discussion, hopefully with traffic studies and things of that year, that idea. And then the those were the two, and those were intermittent agreements between two communities, the Georgetown and, and Newbury. So they both have been in touch with each other. Looks like the library has asked for $10,000 to put kiosses in so that they can have more people that will be able to come in and not, it doesn't have to be, and actually somebody behind the desk so they can check in and check out books. Let's see. There'll be replacement for the 2012 expedition for the fire department and that'll be in the vicinity of $55,000. And $2,800 in donations was for a senior fire prevention grant. Army Corps of Engineers, to go back to Larkin Road, did their study and found that it's good to go, although there, it seemed that there was some information that was not provided to the public. About 19 pages. So, you know, people are just waiting on that. And let's see, they're moving the let's see, the approval of personal manual policies update will be posted next week. There are going to be another discussion on Larkin Road next week. And there was a letter from Rowley regarding Triton Regional School, and apparently they feel as that they're going to have they're going to come in under because, under budget. Yeah, not being able to meet budget, I'm sorry. Because during COVID, a lot of the teachers went and got their master's degree, which gives them the ability to go for an immediate raise in their salary. And that's about it. But the kiosk thing kind of at the library sounds kind of interesting. So what they're trying to do is reduce person to person type of thing for safety measures.
Great, thanks, Leslie. Hey, so was the, the teachers that were going for the masters, was, was that in the elementary school?
No, it was in the Triton Regional.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, cool.
So they felt that there, you know, as the budget is being figured out that the amount of increase in salaries is going to deplete what they can afford as far as like budgetary measures or even improvements and things of that nature.
All right, thank you very much. Larry, CBA.
Larry's having internet connections.
Okay, so we'll come back to that report a little bit later.
Yeah, so we're trying to get him back in.
All right, then I'll, yep, I'll talk for a couple of seconds as you're working on that Martha conservation. Let me just pull up, let's see, Town Newberry 81 Central, that was extended to, 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 to trustees reservation, I'm going to be doing some work on the Causeway. We spoke about this for a couple of secs, Newman Road for access to Adams pasture. The 170 Orchard Street requested an extension because the ground is still frozen. So those are probably the things that are affecting us. Okay, do we have anything from MVP C, Martha?
Yes, I've attended three meetings since our last meeting. One was a commissioner's meeting where, which was really focused on the FY '22 and preliminary FY '23 budgets. They did set the, the assessment for the member communities at a 2.49% increase across the board, which for us was about $60 or something like that. There was a planners' meeting, which had some additional conversation about MBTA communities. And Christine Madour from Mass Housing Partnership also gave a presentation focusing somewhat on technical assistance when it came into the towns. Then there was also a webinar, another webinar by Secretary Kenealy on the MBTA communities. I don't know if it differs from the one that's on the website right now on the state website, but I'm going to check and again, get that link to you all. It did clarify a few questions.
Okay, great. Well, I'm going to try to see if Larry can come in on his cell phone, perhaps.
Yeah, that's what I suggested too. So maybe you can help him with that.
Okay. So I'm just going to pop up here for a second. So we have two minutes. We'll be starting a, our our, our public hearing. So just give me one second, folks. I just want to type in this so I can try to get my vice chair in on the meeting. It's unfortunate when technology goes down. But we have multiple ways of resolving the issues. So we're going to try this one. Okay, thanks for your patience. Let's see, is there anything that we can talk about for a one moment? I mean, actually, one minute, Martha. Yes, George, are we going to say something, my friend?
Yeah, I had a question for Leslie on the planning board meeting and the development and Rowley, no Georgetown, excuse me. Is development giving a separate gone for the development and along with a separate gone for the bridge? Or not?
Georgetown, what it is, is both communities have basically got together and agreed on how it's going to work. There'll be Georgetown will be responsible for maintenance for a 25-year period on the culvert. There is an easement there, which is, will be can be, nothing can be done on that easement as far as building or anything of that nature. But it's, it's according to town council, that part of it is more in the benefit of the town of Newbury so that we don't hold the responsibility in the event that Georgetown doesn't complete the process. And then we have to pick up the ball and make sure that it gets done. And that's basically for the reason of water and electricity, so they can run the lines. Is that, is that good?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Beautiful. And I think Larry is, has connected back up with us, which is perfect timing. Hello, Larry.
I don't know what happened.
That's okay, perfect timing.
Hi, guys. Hi.
Hello, Larry, how are you?
I'm okay, thank you. I'm sorry about my problem.
Well, that's okay. Hopefully everything is resolved. So I think we're going to start our public hearings. In this evening, we do have two public hearings. And the first of the public hearings, let me just pull up my agenda, which, oh my goodness, where did it go? Don't you hate when that happens? Oh, no. Where did it go?
A glitchy night.
It is a glitchy night. I can't believe this. All right, let's see if I can get over here. I think there it is. Okay. So here we go. Thanks again, folks. So a public hearing is going to be, a new public hearing proposed those zoning amendments to delete chapters 97-1 Wireless Communication Overlay District in its entirety and replace it with a new chapter Wireless Communication Facilities with revised and new provisions regarding wireless communication towers, wireless communication facilities, small wireless facilities, modifications to eligible facilities permitting and definitions. And Leslie, would you mind reading the public hearing notice for us, please?
And let me pull that up on the screen.
Thank you, Martha.
Are you able to see that?
Not yet. There it is. Beautiful.
Little bit.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I think that's good. Town of Newbury, Office of the Planning Board, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Massachusetts. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, March 2, 2022, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing remotely via Zoom pursuant to m.g.l.c.48 S5 to consider proposed amendments and additions to the Code of the Town of Newbury, Chapter 97 zoning as follows. Amendments to Article excuse me, four and Regulations of Overlay Districts 97-4.C Wireless Communications Overlay District to delete this text in its entirety and Repose Communication Facilities with revised and new provisions regarding wireless communication towers, wireless communication facilities, small wireless facilities, modifications and eligible facilities permitting and definitions. The text of these proposed amendments is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and the planning office, 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass. And also be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website at HTTPS. You know all those things. Townofnewbury.org, Planning Board Pages, Proposed Zoning and Regulation Amendments. For more information or to request a digital hard copy of the proposed amendments, contact the planning office by phone 978-465-0862, extension 312, or by mail at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. The hearing will be conducted remotely, consistent with the Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A20, until April 1, 22. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed zoning amendments should appear at the time and place designated herein. Interested persons may participate in hearing remotely from the computer, tablet, or smartphone at HTTPS. The colon, double backslash, US02web.zoom.us 83271413056, or by telephone by calling 19292056099 US or N413056, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel number nine at www.tncv.org. Peter Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning. That's where my page stops.
Leslie, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, we can probably stop the screen sharing, Martha?
Yes.
You know, you just want to make sure, Martha, that we're in compliance with MGL.
The report daily news.
Oops, sorry.
Our last. 2022.
Martha, just want to confirm that we're in compliance with MGL, Chapter 48, Section 5?
Yes, as you all know, it was submitted to the select board for, to ask them to submit it back to the planning board, which they did on February 8. The two publications have appeared in the Daily News on February 14 and the 21st. Notice has been sent to DHCD, the MVP C is our regional planning agency, and to the planning boards of the abutting towns, and also posted in the in-town hall on the 14th, which is more than 14 days before the public hearing.
Beautiful, thank you. I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce David Maxon. He's our wireless consultant. And David, we're very happy that you're here with us this evening to help us through this discussion. And the board and the town appreciate your time. Thank you very much. I'll be giving you the floor in a couple of minutes. I think, Martha, did you put together a nice presentation for us that we could kind of take a look at?
So I don't know if it's nice, but I did put something together. So let me see if I can, are you able to see that?
Not yet, but we have patience.
Okay, hold on. Let me now.
Yep, perfect. We can see that, Martha. Thank you.
Um, all right, so this says noted Planning Board Public Hearing for the proposed zoning amendments for the April 2022 Annual Town Meeting. And this is on proposed revisions to our Wireless Communications Bylaw being held tonight. So a little, a little background on this. The town originally adopted Wireless Communication Service Overlay District bylaw at the April 24, 2001 annual town meeting, and that was following the passage of the Town Communications Act of 1996. That bylaw established overlay district and permitting process for wireless communication services, specifically towers, antennas, and accessory structures in Newbury, and located this overlay district in what is now the Business and Light Industrial District, which runs from along Route 1 from the Newbury Newport municipal boundary down to Boston Road. There have been a few revisions to the bylaw since that time. The most substantive was in April of 2019 at the annual town meeting, basically to bring it into compliance with provisions of the Spectrum Act of 2012. And David, please jump in at any point if I'm not, not, if I'm misspeaking. So these revisions are intended to bring the bylaw into compliance with current federal law and FCC regulations. And it's been noted frequently over the past number of years that there are some significant gaps in coverage in town, notably around Black Duck Circle and out on Plum Island and some other areas in Byfield. And this was shown when David was working with us to develop this bylaw. They did some, some drive-throughs of town for the three major providers, and those basically bore out the anecdotal experience that we've had in the areas that have coverage gaps. And so the bylaw is intended to you know, sort of broaden our provisions and, and provide a mechanism that will allow providers to come in and address these gaps in coverage and the related public safety concerns that are tied with those. You know, for example, there's a defibrillator out on Plum Island and you know, its ability to connect is, is, is an issue. And the proposed revisions update add to the regulations for the placement, construction, and modification of wireless communications facilities in Newbury. Specifically, the first portion renames our Wireless Communication Services Overlay District as now calling it the Wireless Communications Tower District. And this is specifically to recognize that towers are allowed in, in, in that district in town and only in that district, which again is, is co-chairmentist with our Business and Light Industrial District. And allowed by special permit, the special permit granting authorities proposed to change from the ZBA to the planning board because there is, you know, site plan review involved with the process. And conditions and criteria for approval of towers have been revised. And these are provisions regarding colocation, design, height, and setbacks. General provisions for wireless communications facilities have been added for all districts. Special permits and middle requirements have been revised. Language regarding small wireless facilities outside rights of way have been added. And provisions regarding monitoring inspections have been revised. Provisions regarding modifications and eligibility plus have been revised. And a whole series of definitions have been added at the end. So that's, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Beautiful. Thank you very much, Martha. That was helpful. David, did you want to make any additional comments to what Martha has presented so far?
Great, thanks, David Maxon with Isotrop. And I suppose I could summarize Martha's summary. When I'm asked to look at a bylaw to help a town decide how it might revise the bylaw, there's a few things involved. One is that we, we did this drive test where we took measurements of the coverage of the existing carriers throughout the town and shared maps with, with the board on that. And that helps us recognize where something like an overlay district is working and where it isn't. And it helps us recognize whether the other part of the bylaw, which is not the overlay district, but the permissions to install wireless facilities on existing structures outside the overlay district, how that's working and whether that's something that can be continued or things need to be changed. Another thing I do when I look at, at a bylaw to consider editing it is I've worked with a lot of bylaws in a lot of towns, some of which have been sued by wireless carriers in federal court over the years. And I have a feel for where points of confusion or ambiguities or loopholes exist in the way bylaws are structured. So I look for ways to make the bylaw more effective in two ways. It's not simply to just try and stop wireless facilities from being built. And on the opposite end of the scale, it's not simply to allow wireless facilities to have privileges willy-nilly across the town to develop things. It's, it's that, that point in the middle where the town desires enough control that it can apply legally under federal scrutiny to get a good result when a proposal for a new wireless facility is brought forth. And I think at this point, we all recognize that getting good wireless coverage is, is a desirable thing and it's beneficial. Um, and I think at this point, we all recognize that getting good wireless coverage is, is a desirable thing and it's beneficial to. Our sanity and our economic lives and everything else. So um, unlike it was maybe twenty years ago. When it was still something that rich people had and nobody else did. It's ubiquitous now. We have to kind of recognize that. That also means that wireless companies are coming back to provide more coverage. So you might be able to use your cell phone in a particular location today. Uh, but a wireless company might still want to bring in a new facility. Because of the capacity demands, because we're now streaming videos and moving gobs of traffic data to the. Traffic apps on our phones as we're driving down the street and pretty soon our phones are going to be connected to the internet, our phones, our cars are going to be connected to the internet and. Yeah, there's just, just a tremendous amount of data demand that wasn't there even uh, ten years ago. Uh, so that also means more facilities. In the time since the, the bylaw was written, we've also seen, as Martha mentioned, the twenty twelve. Middle class tax relief and jobs creation act, which has a section sixty four oh nine. Uh, that the FCC subsequently interpreted. Uh, on behalf of the wireless companies and the town has to abide by that. And that's, that's regarding modification of wireless facilities. And they have a threshold that um, if a modification is not a substantial modification, then it's an eligible facilities request. And uh, eligible facilities requests, according to the law. May not be denied and shall be approved. You still can apply conditions. You still have an opportunity to review and use the conditions in your, and the, the performance criteria in your bylaw. So that is a part that we added to the bylaw. And another thing, talking about capacity, is that in the last number of years with, especially with four G technology. Wireless carriers are now putting in those small cells largely on things like utility poles in the public way. Uh, so there is a small cell regulation that the FCC has interpreted. And um, we've put some language in addressing the small cell question. Now, most small cells are in a public way, so that would go to the Board of Selectmen for the equivalent of a grant of location process. But the way the small cell law is written. If a wireless company applies for a small cell on private property where zoning applies, you still need to be following the rules. And with both of the eligible facilities request. Uh, rules from twenty twelve and these more recent small cell rules. Um, the FCC has added new shot clocks. So everything you do regarding a wireless facility is under a shot clock. It could be sixty days, ninety days, a hundred fifty days, depending on what kind of an application it is. And in the case of the small cell applications, the town has ten days. To decide whether the application is complete or not. And so that puts a burden usually on staff and often on a consultant to respond quickly. When a, an application for small wireless facilities comes in. Now, one thing that the town of Burlington did, which was, I think, pretty wise, was they created a small cell bylaw. For small cells on private property and this Board of Selectmen created small cell regulations for the public way. And they both refer to a separate set of performance criteria that are published and adjusted. By the planning board. So that, that, those criteria are not in the bylaw and don't need to be adjusted by, by town meeting. They can be adjusted more in response to changing conditions. And it's something that once it's done for the planning board, the Board of Selectmen can also refer to it. So that's something that will be homework for the planning board. If this uh, change in the bylaw is adopted. And the last thing in terms of homework for the planning board and for the town is. In our evaluation of wireless coverage and of what the bylaw and what the changes to the bylaw can and can't do. Uh, we believe that there are locations in town that we call pressure points. Where it's very likely that sometime in the future, it could be one year, it could be five years, it could be fifteen years. But sometime in the future, a wireless carrier or more will be interested in having a tower. Or something relatively tall uh, to provide coverage to an underserved part of the town. And I think wisely, uh, the board and staff have decided not to include discussion of that in this. Stage. This is just to get the bylaw updated to bring it into the. Mid twenty first century, but um, to have that discussion uh, next to talk about. What to do with um, with the potential for needing additional towers in certain parts of the town. Um, and so that's my nutshell.
David, that's very, very helpful. And again, I appreciate you having the ability to, to help the town with this process. And I know we met maybe four years ago, three, four years ago when we started this. So it's, it's wonderful to kind of bring it to close to the finish line. So we can get it there. Um, let me see if there's any board members that have any questions. Larry, sir, do you have any questions?
Uh, just a couple. Uh, David, uh, so I understand our current bylaw is not in compliance with federal law. Is that correct?
I, I, first of all, I'm not a lawyer, so I wouldn't say that. But in a general sense, what it is, is there are aspects of. Federal compliance that are made to operate more smoothly and have less risk. If you've put them in the structure of the bylaw.
Okay, and if we fail to adopt this, are there consequences we could anticipate?
Uh, it, yeah, I mean, one is that you'll have whatever. Problems you're familiar with when you're dealing with wireless carrier applications where some of the things we've done, just to touch up. The, the language of the bylaw and the definitions and the ambiguities. Uh, those, those difficulties will remain. In addition to that. These two major changes where we've formally addressed eligible facilities requests and small wireless facilities. Your bylaw is silent on that right now, so you have no guidance whatsoever on how to, on how to comply. Uh, with the, uh, with the federal rules.
Uh, as to the small wireless facilities, uh, and I, I just, please correct me. I just want to see if my understanding is correct. These are relatively small devices. What I think they're limited to something like three cubic feet or something on that order. Is that?
Yes, the FCC defined them uh, with the idea that these would be things that you would not normally mind having on a utility pole. So the antenna volume, uh, or the antenna cover, the volume would be on the order of three cubic feet. And then the equipment mounted on the side of the utility pole has a volume of up to something like twenty eight cubic feet.
These wouldn't dramatically increase the height of the pole.
The FCC small cell uh, regulation. Uh, allows heights of up to fifty feet and to still call it a small cell. Uh, most utility poles are in the thirties to forty foot above ground height. Um, if they're forty feet above ground, they probably have high voltage primaries on them. And uh, the utilities are not comfortable having antennas above those primaries. So sometimes what we see is a, a stub pole across the street that's acting as a, a support pole with a guy wire across. Be replaced with one that might be forty, forty two feet tall with a three foot tall antenna. So you're, you could be getting up into the forty foot range or maybe a little bit higher on some occasions.
Okay, and are they of the small? Uh, the. I'm sorry, I'm losing the, the term. The small wireless facilities, are they permitted in any just zoning district or just the overlay district?
That's a great question. If you're talking about attaching any wireless facility, whether it's small or not to an existing structure, that's permitted anywhere. If you're talking about building a new tower, quote unquote. Um, I would say that a small wireless facility being put on a new utility pole on private property is. It would probably be interpreted as being a tower and therefore need to be in the, in the tower district. Uh, you know, that's a great question, but I think what we're going to see is most small cells are going to be in the public way. And that can be on any street that wireless company thinks it can, it needs it.
And that would be within the jurisdiction of the, the select board.
That's correct.
Does that need to be written into the bylaw or is that, is that found elsewhere? That authority found elsewhere?
Yeah, I think at first it was unclear, but the more towns that I go to and the more town councils that I get involved with. Uh, my sense is that it's pretty obvious that it is equivalent to. A, a grant of location for a utility, uh, because zoning rules typically don't apply to public ways.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Thanks very much, Larry. George, sir, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Leslie, do you have any questions?
Um, just a, a small question. If one of these small cell antennas were to be placed on private property. It would have to be. Um, with the okay of the person that owns the property, just going to, you know, town meeting. Is there anything else that the private property owner should know? Will they? As if the cell is there, if the tower is on their property. Would they have some kind of compensation knowing that others would have authority to come on? And do maintenance on the, the, the company's. Prop uh, utilities.
Great question and uh, you can have counsel correct me if I'm wrong, but here's, here's what I see. First of all, anytime someone who owns private property is allowing a wireless carrier. To basically rent space on their property to put up a pole or a tower or to mount antennas on their building. Uh, they're entering into a lease contract with the wireless carrier and there is some compensation for that, whatever the two parties agree to. On the other hand, I think there's a gray area where if the utility has an easement. Uh, that to bring telecommunications and electricity across a property. To some other point, whether it's a destination on the property or to the next property. Depending on how that easement is worded, the wireless carrier might be able to piggyback on to the utility. Uh, and, and take advantage of their easement to put their uh, equipment on the pole. That's not anything the town can say yes or no to. It's not anything that, that is involved in zoning. The only thing that would be involved in zoning is that once a deal like that is done, the wireless company would apply for. A, a permit because it's on private property, even though it's on a utility easement. Um, I don't envision that kind of problem cropping up. I haven't seen it at this point. I've seen mostly public ways where they're using utility poles.
And these easements that you refer to would already have to be in existence in order for them to proceed.
That's correct. Uh, I mean, the other alternative is that the utility, the, the wireless company goes to the private property owner and says. Gee, can I pay you a fixed amount to, for an easement rather than paying you a small sum of money a month? Um, that sometimes happens as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I'm good for now. Thank you, David.
Beautiful. Yes, David, again, thank you. And we're so very glad that you also volunteered to come to our town meeting when, when the time is appropriate. Just kidding, just kidding, buddy.
I've done it. I've done it.
Martha, is anything that you'd need to add to the conversation thus far?
I can't think of anything.
Okay.
Forgot about me.
Mary! On your camera so I can see your sweet face, please.
Uh, yeah, but you don't want to see how I had my nose done.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Mary. Forgive me. I did not see you. Yes, please.
Um, David, thanks a lot. It's really helpful. How common are these easements?
Not at all, not at all common.
I wonder.
This is a very low grade problem. It's just that when, when you get a hypothetical, you think of all the possibilities and lay them out there, but. Uh, it's not something I think people need to be concerned about.
Yeah, it just, yeah, okay. Thanks, David. You're very, very helpful. I appreciate it. Most, most appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, and my, my apologies. Um, okay, are there any uh, comments at this point? We'd like to open our public hearing to see if there's any. Comments from members that would like to ask any questions since we have our consultant here at this time. Martha, do you see any hands with any questions?
I do not see any hands with any questions.
Okay, all right. Um, so. We still have some particulars on language that we're working out with this method.
Uh, yeah, we have a, a current working draft, which is a slightly updated version of the one that's on the website right now. And I think there's still a few things that need to be ironed out.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think there were.
Yeah, I think uh, since they were there and counsel didn't. Uh, object to my suggestions, uh, we probably can just adopt them and then make sure that's okay with her. Um, but they're, they're relatively minor things. They're kind of procedural or editorial. How do you say something? Um, there's really nothing substantive that, that is open on the, on the table.
Okay, I think probably be a good idea until we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed that we probably are. Uh, allow this to stay open. Would it, is our next meeting the sixteenth, Martha?
Yes.
Okay, um, then I think I, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the sixteenth at seven fifteen via Zoom.
I make a motion, we continue this to the sixteenth. At seven fifty.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Larry. On the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
No.
No, thank you. Leslie, discussion?
None.
Uh, great. Woody, discussion?
No.
Great. Mary, discussion?
No.
Beautiful. On the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, George. How do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful. The chair is in favor as well. Uh, David, thank you very much. Martha might be, I would think, touching base again. And we really appreciate all that you've done for our community.
Well, thank you. And as you said, it's been a, been a long run on this, but uh, I think this is very good progress. So looking forward to buttoning it up.
Indeed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, let me see where we are with our agenda. Um, so we have the continuance of a public hearing, uh, which is a special permit. Uh, application for ground mounted solar PV installation and seventy five Boston Road, which is the Newbury landfill map, map R thirty six. Lot twenty seven applicant is Alliance Newbury LLC owner is a town of Newbury. Um, so this hearing was opened on twelve fifteen twenty one. Well, the applicant requested continuances on one nineteen of twenty twenty two, another continuance on two, two, two twenty two. And two sixteen, two twenty two, the hearings are accordingly continued without any discussion. Larry Murphy did miss the twelve fifteen session of the public hearing and has submitted the required certifications to do that he's watched the video. Of the missed public hearing session. So we have received some revised materials from the applicant, including some revised plans. Um, a sweet path for the fire apparatus and a letter responding to comments from the town's peer review and town staff. Uh, us in issues. Um, so let's see where we are with this. I might want to ask our applicant. To, to bring us up to speed.
So that would be Eric.
Eric, how are you, my friend?
Good, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, Board. Appreciate your time tonight. Um, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we came in front of you originally back in December. Um, we presented a set of plans then. We hadn't received all comments. Um, we since have. The board has had the opportunity to go out and see the site. We have tried to address all the comments. Or we have addressed all the comments from the third tap, from the town's third party engineer and from the fire department. And I believe we've, we've addressed all issues. Uh, I'm happy to walk through anything if that's helpful, Mr. Chair. I can present the, the revised drawings. Questions. I can do whatever's helpful.
Yeah, Eric, why don't we take a look at the revised drawing and just, and you can explain to the board and to the public exactly what the changes are so that we can appreciate those.
Yes, and I apologize, my, my consultant couldn't be on today, so I'm going to do my best to fill his, his roles. Uh, Martha, I just need to hit share and I can, yeah, there we go. Okay.
You should be also.
Hey, can you guys see the screen now?
We can.
Bear with me. Okay, um, one of the biggest comments was from the fire department. It had to do with fire access. And actually, let me share the sketch first. And actually, let me share the sketch first. Sorry about that. Okay. The biggest comment received back after the presentation was from the fire department about fire access. We had our consultant, West Engineer Engineering, go out there and look at the loading per the fire chiefs and the access road. The access road is in good shape, but it does need to be modified. This plan here just shows the access that the fire trucks would be able to have to meet the the requirements of the CMR. And as you can see with 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 slight variations in the road, the road is in good shape, actually, as far as width and turning radius. There are some spots we'll have to add a little bit, but the fire department will have full access to everything. One of the other comments from the fire department was just making sure that there are shut offs. There always are per the National Electric Code. And that there's not, the the surface underneath the panels, it is is can't can't be ignited and we're putting gravel and stone down. We will be, we will need to adjust the road slightly because of loading requirements that says on a landfill and part of this access road does land. On the liner, the liner of the landfill, so we will be, we will need to increase. The road by approximately a foot in some areas to make sure that we have the loading per per the requirements of the fire department. And for the Department of Environmental Protection. The biggest change here is that there is the police department has a firing range, and I don't know if you can see my cursor, but roughly in this area here. And that will be, that will need to be removed to accommodate the fire department. I believe they found a viable spot in this area here, and we will work with them to make sure that 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 gets it. But the plan as it stands will include removing that and upgrading the road. Most of the third party engineering comments were were minor. And and a lot of administrative and plan, I think, details. I'm happy to go through with them, Mr. Chairman, if you like, but I think the biggest one was the fire department and the access road.
Okay, is that Eric? Is that it?
Again, I'm not, I'm not doing Steve justice because he talked for forty-five minutes, so I apologize. And I also need to apologize. I don't have my camera on today. I'm at home and this computer doesn't have a camera, so I'm sorry you can't see my face.
Okay, very good. Let me see if board members have have any questions or comments. As to where we're at now. Larry, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I do not.
Great. George, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I do not.
Wonderful. Woody, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
No, I don't.
Okay, Leslie, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
All right, Mary, do you have any questions? Okay. Eric, quick question. This is gonna have to go before conservation. Is that correct?
This is already gone in front of conservation. You already have a certificate of or notice of intent, and you've already been granted everything. You're our last permit. We've gone in front of DEP conservation, so you're the last permit. The moving of the police station or the firing range, which isn't, I don't want to call it a building, but it would require an additional. Permit, the solid waste thirty-six, which is a simple form to go in front of DEP. Okay, every other permit's been received at this point.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Okay, thanks. We can probably stop screen sharing. Thanks very much. In Martha, have we received any written comments from town staff?
The only thing I've received is a quick email from James Saret today. Basically saying that he has no other, no other concerns. There has been discussion about the fence. And it might make sense, he suggested it might make sense to replace that when this is done.
And that fence, would that go completely around, or is that just the three quarter? How, Eric?
So our plans call for augmenting the existing fence around our leased area. This is a site owned by the town that we we don't, we're not leasing the entire site, so. We do call for a chain link fence tying into the existing one in new areas, just to make sure that the PV is inaccessible, inaccessible. Which is the word used in the National Electric Code, which is what we need to make sure. So, you know, I don't know that, I don't know how bad the existing fence is. We assumed it was maintained fairly well, I think. And and we wouldn't be doing the entire, the entire site is much bigger than our area, we'll say, right?
Great. Martha, do we have any questions from the public at this point in time?
Um, I have not received any.
Okay, all right. Larry, do you think we should look at the special permit criteria? Should we think about a draft decision? What's your thoughts, sir?
I would, I, it seems to me that we could move in that direction, sure.
Martha, should we share the special permit review criteria?
Sure.
Components that apply for this particular application.
And may I just ask a question about the firing range?
Sure, please do.
Oh, Eric, just to to be clear, so there was some discussion. There's some question about which post closure use permit would be modified, whether it was one for the firing range or the one for this project. Could you please kind of clarify that and let us know exactly where that stands?
Yes, so the DEP, hold on, let me pull up the email so I read it correctly. It's. They would need a new application, which is the solid waste thirty-six permanent application, which is a minor modification application. It and it was the same as what was permitted for that, so it is a minor, minor modification. Because just because it's on site, it's on site assigned land.
So minor modification to.
Yes, and the permit number is solid waste thirty-six is what it's called. It's it's not a modification to an existing permit. They would want a new permit application.
Okay. And you're not anticipating any, any modification to the existing order of conditions from the CONCOM?
We are not, no.
Okay.
We we don't change anything within the buffer. We were already adding gravel as needed, was the plan that we were showing then, and. And we're not changing any amounts of fill or anything like that within within the resource area.
Okay, thanks. I just want to clarify that. All right, so let me see if I can pull up the.
Need to make those a little bit larger for the tired eyes.
Do that.
Right, okay. So let's kind of, if you want to just hit the highlights of what would be appropriate here.
All right, so there are, there are some requirements. One of which has to do with the open space and agricultural impact. And essentially, because this is being built on a landfill, I think a lot of these don't really apply. You know, it's not, not an installation that's being used for agriculture or suitable for agriculture. There are some, you know, comments determining whether any environmental remediation efforts need to be done. Those have been addressed, I think, by the applicant. Land clearing, soil erosion and habitat impacts. I don't think those apply. The O and M plan, we do need to to have that.
Did you write a copy, Martha, in our original?
Right.
Application.
Right, so that will have to be. Given another look. So I think it's really the the findings here. You can see my arrows. From there down that the board really needs to to consider in deciding whether to grant a special permit or not. So it's O two, starting with O two A here.
Okay, so does a proposed use and development will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent properties or character of the area or the public health or safety of the welfare. General welfare. I'm going to, as I read these, if anyone has any concerns, I'm gonna pause, please just say yes. Okay, I'll continue on. B, the nature intensity of the intended operations will not. discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land or buildings nor impair the land value thereof. Okay, I will continue. C, all proposed traffic access way shall be adequate, but not excessive. And number adequate and with great alignment and visibility sufficiently separated from the street intersections and places of. Public assembly and shall meet similar safety considerations. Okay, still no concerns. D, adequate safety and access off-street parking and loading spaces shall be provided to avoid parking in public streets. On vehicles belonging to persons connected with or visiting the site, including minimum parking of parking of three spaces for trucks and two for automobiles. Okay, still no objections or concerns. E, adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency services. Equipment shall be provided. Keys for access to all portions of the project shall be provided to the fire department and police department. Okay, I think you just advanced a little bit. Thank you. All right. Okay, F, the proposed use and development will not result in the destruction, loss or damage of any natural scenic or historic features. The significant importance. Okay. Continuing G, the entire project shall be screened at all seasons of the year from the view of the adjacent residential lots and streets and roadways. And the general landscape of the site shall be in character with a general prevailing in the neighborhood. I'll just comment or raise a comment or Martha, perhaps we need to have a consideration. A screening would not be able to be achieved with this site, and I just want to see if anyone has any concerns with regards to that. Larry?
No, I don't. Given the location of the site, I don't have any concerns.
Okay, great. George?
Not at all.
Okay, Woody?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Leslie?
None.
Thank you, Mary?
Nope.
Okay, great. So we'll just note that Martha, that decision, let's see. The volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees that are six feet, there is no cut and fill going on here. Adequate provision shall be provided for stormwater management and other utilities consistent with functional requirements of the Newbury Stormwater Rules and Regulations. Department of Environmental Protection, the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Handbook, and the stormwater components are part of the application. Is that correct, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. Obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations shall be minimized. Okay, glare from a site lighting shall be minimized. Okay, no concerns. Sound impacts from transformers inverters and other electrical equipment shall be mitigated with use of enclosures, shielding. And placement of sound generating equipment in the site. Are we doing that with this, Martha?
I think I'll ask Eric to to address that. Again, given the location, it's probably not much of an issue here.
I would say that all the electrical equipment that we're installing inverters transformers has some form of sound guard on, and most of them are built that way now. The the utility is cloning. I'm trying to think on this one. I apologize. The utility will have transformer on their end too, and they they meet those requirements as is now, so I believe we need it. And and it's just a nature of the nature of the equipment as it comes nowadays. But there's no additional, there's no additional like sound barrier we're putting up, and I don't think with the with the location, anyone would be able to hear anything.
Right. Continuing. Unreasonable departure from the character materials, the scale, the buildings in the vicinity of views of the public ways and places shall be minimized. And. And the provisions proposed development of the site shall be compliance with the provisions of the Newbury zoning bylaw, including park signs. Parking signs, landscaping, environmental standards and other pertinent sections. Final action, a special permit shall be granted. By the SPGA. After the fines raised conditions we described have been satisfied. Okay, I don't hear any additional concerns from board members. That being the case, Larry, do you think it's appropriate to have our planning director draft a decision?
I do.
Okay. Then I think, well, want to make that in the form of a motion, Larry?
Yeah, I would move that we. Request the planning director to draft a decision. Of approval for this this project, the special permit. To be. Presented while I'm getting ahead of myself. I was gonna, I was gonna say the next meeting, but I'm not sure if that's giving you enough time. So I just leave it at that.
Beautiful. Thanks, Eric. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody, for this second discussion on motion, Larry.
No.
Discussion, thank you. Discussion on motion, George.
Not so much on the motion. I have a question about access to the equipment during, say, snow, heavy snow periods. To obtain access to the facilities, maintenance, place to put the snow. Who's responsible for that?
We we would not plow that at all. We would not, our inverters are actually out on the landfill. They're not near the access road. There is some electrical equipment near the access road, but we we would not maintain that because there's no need to. If something goes down, someone's walking, an electrician's walking out there anyway, right? So we can't, we can't plow the landfill. If we had to get in there, you know, we we would either wait for it to melt like it does very often in New England. Or or we would, you know, have have a heavy duty truck that can plow in there at that moment.
Very well, thank you.
George, is your concern regarding the access road surrounding that that be maintained and plowed?
Who normally plows it now? Is that the town or should it be a shared need?
Well. Martha, help me with this one. With our previous solar approval, the applicant was required to. Plow to allow for fire access to a certain degree. Was that correct?
Right, the condition was that they would plow for fire, plow the access for fire access. If the snow was eight inches deep or or more deep.
Okay, so George, you've actually brought brought up a point. So before we get further. With this, is that a condition that the board would like to entertain with this as the as we're drafting this?
Well, if it is, it certainly would be a part of the decision. And that would be with the committee, I think, working with it before it comes to the board.
Larry, thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think George's point is well taken. Yeah, I mean, we do need to maintain fire access.
So that would be the responsibility of the applicant.
As a condition of the approval, I would think, yeah.
Leslie?
Clarification, are we referring to the road that runs to the backside of the landfill at this point in time?
Access road, yes.
Okay, and the town of Newbury is actually responsible for that. To keep the maintenance up on that, or is that the responsibility of the leasing?
So since this would be a required fire access road for the facility which is being put in place, this would be something new.
So that's part, that's part of their lease.
With the, that's what we're trying to decide right now. If this is going to be one of the conditions that we're going to put into our decision.
Okay. So at this point, I think it's. Probably a good idea to look a little bit deeper into it.
Okay, great. Woody?
I have a clarification as well. The other smaller project that we did before that. You said it was eight inches of more snow. It was required to be plowed?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we should stick to being consistent with past decisions and. If there's eight inches or more required, require the access road to be plowed.
Thank you, Woody.
Fire access, obviously.
Mary?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Uh, okay, so I think Martha, that'll go into our our decision then. And then.
Yeah, then I'll review the prior decisions for for other conditions that seem applicable.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you, George. So then going back to the motion. Any additional discussion, any additional discussion, Leslie, on the motion?
None.
Great. Woody, discussion on the motion?
None.
Thank you. Mary, discussion on the motion?
No.
Great. Larry, how do you vote in the motion, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel about the motion?
Yes.
Wonderful. My chair is in favor as well. Then I would ask to continue this public hearing. Martha, is the sixteenth or would the sixth be better for time to, to draft that?
No, that's a good question.
Okay, we, we have time to under that answer. So we have a next meeting is going to be in two weeks on the sixteenth and following that two weeks for April sixth.
Yeah, it's actually three weeks until.
Okay.
So. You know, I think, I think, excuse my decision should be pretty straightforward. We could, we could aim for the sixteenth then. If we need more time, then continue again.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to the sixteenth of March. It's seven fifteen years old.
So move.
Thank you, Larry, on the motion. A second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Discussion on the motion, George?
No.
Discussion on the motion, Leslie?
No.
Question on the motion, Woody?
None.
Question on the motion, Mary?
No.
Okay, on the motion, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, Mary, how do you feel?
I agree.
Beautiful. And the chair is as well. Beautiful. Thank you for that. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. Thank you, Martha. I'll see you in two weeks hopefully.
All right, let's see where we are with our. So new business, so one oh five higher road, oh, S R D, our request for design from Design Consultants Inc. D C I on behalf of DePiero LLC for approval of proposed grading, utility layout changes in exclusive use areas five, six, seven, eight, nine, as shown as on O S R D grading, such drainage plan sheets, one, uh, point two one and C one point two two paired by D C I revise on two eighteen twenty-two. Is it you, Steve?
Yeah, it would be me. I'm here with Mark tonight.
All right, Steve, just the announcement, please.
Oh, uh, Steve Sawyer here on behalf of DePiero LLC with Design Consultants Inc. And here just to discuss the grading, the grading changes. Actually, the grading update.
Okay, so the floor is yours, sir.
All right, so as we, I probably should just share a screen, just jump right into that. All right, nope, wrong one. Actually, can you see this, sir?
Uh, we can.
Yes.
All right, so see my cursor? Yeah, there we go. All right, so as part of the conditions, we are, I think, as we all recall, with the project, the footprints that we had shown were just a placeholder because all these were going to be custom designed or it'd be, we hadn't worked out the design at that time. And as part of the condition was each site plan was going to have to be, was going to be submitted to the planning department along with review, peer review from the town's peer review engineer. So we've actually gone through two iterations. We submitted one. There were some comments that came back. We revised the grading. Joe actually issued a letter yesterday saying that the grading of units five, six, seven, eight, and nine match, or is he typically what I think is typical him, appeared to match the grading as proposed. So he didn't have any issues with the grading changes. So that typically, I, I, our understanding was it was just going to be an internal or a non, non-board action. But I think Martha was uncomfortable with that and wanted us to come in and present it to you. So here we are presenting to the board. So basically we're maintaining the existing flow pattern. Actually, if we zoom in here, the first start kind of work backwards. You can see the red, the red is the wall on the special permit plan, and we have more of a bit of a serpentine wall just to make it a little more interesting. And then also to work around the house. You can see at this location, the wall slightly closer, it's closer to the tree. This location is further away for the tree at this closest location to this ten-inch maple. It's the same as the approved location at this ten-inch maple. So it's a little closer here, but further away here. But in no case is it closer than that. I believe these are two Norway maples, which not the best trees in the world, invasives, but we are maintaining them. So the same drainage pattern is held. We have the swale running down plant south towards the, towards the rain garden or the infiltration area at the base, base of the hill. One thing I've added, this is basically, or it's a construction level to assistant construction. I've added all the utilities in color just so it's easy to see for review as we're constructing these buildings moving forward. And then same as we're, same drainage pattern as we are running down. I actually, for ease of review, I provided the red in a very, the screen screened in red, the contours from the original plan. And just for the ease of Joe to review and see that we're maintaining the same drainage patterns. So this swale dumps into this infiltration here at the base. And basically, that's it. Uh, what we're looking for, Mark's anxious to get, we need sign off on the grading prior to Peter issuing a building permit for these units. So right now, we're looking to, uh, actually was, we're looking to do units five, six, seven, eight, and and nine is the one further up. And, and nine. Um, we're, we're still, this is a little bit of a work in progress on the, the floor on the left. Um, there were discussions. Mark had very fruitful discussions with Matt. They're actually working, I think it's, it's probably seen at the beginning. Um, there was probably a little bit of issues between the two, and we're working very well together now. And Matt was looking to relinquish his, any of his rights to that seven-foot easement, which if he had, we were gonna, um, if he does, we're gonna shift, shift some of our shifted landscaping out into that easement area. That's basically a work in progress right now. So we're kind of holding off on these units here to let's resolve and I'll finalize the grading and, and, and orientation of the, of the buildings here. That's it. That's what we're here for. I don't know if the board has any questions or Martha wants to chime in. But we did get a letter from Joe yesterday saying that the, um, he concurred with the grading on those units.
Okay, um. Martha, I have a couple of questions that I just want you to help the, the board with. Was there a condition that kind of raise a concern with this in our, our previous decision?
Um, I think that, well, the condition in the, in the special permit decision, condition number eight, basically say, states that all grading shall be done in accordance with the approved O S R D site plan. So.
So that is what then activated, triggered this and then are, is why Steve is, is in with us tonight having a discussion. Okay.
Yes, also a, another condition, condition five, which states that, you know, any, any, any changes will come before the board for approval. And the board can, if it's a substantial change, it would require a public hearing. The board does have the authority to approve minor modifications. So those two conditions.
So like, yeah, so we have to figure out if this is a minor modification or a major modification. But Steve, you've, you've just, uh, brought something that I guess opens up the discussion here. So your, your request was regarding five through nine, correct?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, but you've kind of indicated to the board that there's something in the works with one through four.
Just with the grading and the orientation of the buildings. So we originally, the thought, our original thought was we'd be coming in one by one with these. I think was when we were talking and it wasn't going to be a, when you're in discussions during the, the board, during the presentation back of months ago, was we, it's okay, as we come in with each lot, we'll present a grading plan for, or not lot, for each unit. We prevent a grading plan, present a grading plan for each. Um, we actually got a little, we're, right now, we're kind of moving forward with five instead of one, one at a time. Then the next four, the, the other four will either come in with all four one at a time.
How far are you away from having one through four worked out?
I, I don't know. I'd, I'd probably say within a couple of weeks, we'd have those submitted. But it, I don't know what, I, I think it's a bit of a, it's not really what we're asking for here. We're just asking for, there was, we're looking at per the decision was, okay. We were originally going to come in one at a time, so we're coming in with five at a time, so.
You know, no, well, I understand what you're asking, but it seems as though we're kind of, we had a decision. Pretty well defined and then we're coming back and we're kind of modifying this kind of piecemeal-ish. So if you, this thing is going to be wrapped up in two weeks is what you kind of said.
Well.
Does it make sense that the package?
No, that, that, this is, we're, we're kind of, the original plan was we were going to come in one at a time, Peter, Peter. And this, we kind of worked out those five units and we're coming in for those five. There's, there's no reason why we can't approve these five while we're working out the other four. As far as the great, really, it's just for the grading only. It's what we're looking at. And that was part of the condition was because we didn't have the footprints finalized in our plan that we had to make sure that each, each unit, the grading conformed to the, uh, conformed to the plan, conformed to the approved plan, which these five do. Um, and it's really, it's, it, the site's kind of divided in half anyway. You get the north half and the south half. Really two separate drainage areas. So this is a distinct and separate drainage area from the north, or those, those four units in the north. So.
Okay, that's, okay. All right, let's just kind of, Martha, can you just kind of summarize what Joe's, uh, Joe's comments were?
Um. Most recent comments?
Yes.
I mean, basically, in his original comments, let me backtrack a little bit. There, there was a, a previous plan that was submitted basically that kind of administratively to Joe and me, and his comments on that were that one through four in particular seemed to be a substantial modification from the decision. And again, I, I, I would still like to take a little exception with what Steve's saying here. I think there was some discussion at one point about coming in one by one with the exclusive use areas. But the final was based on the understanding that the grading that was shown on the approved special permit plan was what was going to be built. And so that's, that's what condition eight says. So that said, in going to Joe's comments, he does say that the revised grading for units five through nine appear to meet the intent of the approved plans. Differences appear to be minor. Stormwater appears to be conveyed as required on the approved plans. So. And then as Steve has noted, the grading for units one through four is still being revised. So approval is only sought for units five through nine at this point. Talks about revised wall location. Says the locations are similar, doesn't really comment further on that. And made some comments about the cobbled cobble pavers. Response states that the landscape plan is currently being revised and will be submitted for the record. The board may want the plan submitted for approval. Just. There's some discussion about two to one slopes versus three to, three to one slopes. Uh, he says, response states that there may be a couple of locations where two to one slope is proposed based on the plans. These areas appear to be related to the drainage soil grading should generally be easy to stabilize with vegetation. As noted in the responses, swale grading has been revised to match the approved plans. That was it.
Okay, Steve, could we just stop screen sharing for a couple of secs? Okay, so Larry, I'm going to have you kind of, just kind of help me through, through with this discussion. So we're, we're looking at five through, looking at five through nine. We're not looking at one through four. So one through four might have some concerns. And has there been any discussion with regards to the open space at all? Is, is that something that's up for consideration with this project due at this point in time?
Yeah, you're not directing that to me, are you?
No, I'm directing to the applicant.
Oh, okay. Sorry that you're talking to us. There has been, I believe, Mark, you've, I'll let Mark speak to this.
We're, we're trying to get a plan together for the open space. We're probably three weeks out.
So what, what, Mark, what does that mean? We're trying to get a plan together for the open space?
Well, we already know what the parameters are concerning the back piece of land. We understand that. So we're trying to put a plan together.
But I guess, I guess Peter, Peter, at this point, we're proceeding as per, we have, you know, the open space, we're proceeding per the approved plan. But.
So that's, I guess I'm confused now. So what, what plan are we doing if there's something already approved?
So. So Mark's, yeah, so I, I believe everyone's aware that Mark's been in discussion with Matt in this discussion of providing that for agricultural land for, uh, I believe Mark, Mark's been in discussions with Matt and Matt's been in discussions with the town about that. Um, and it's up, that's, that's something that we don't, whether we maintain it is wooded and per the plan, it's fine with us if it goes. I know as part of the town, as part of the bylaw and the desires of the town, agriculture is a very important piece of that. So I think that's why that was invested, or that was basically discussed. And in particular, where Matt now owns the property next door and will be farming that land next door. It would provide additional, additional farmland. Now, that's really a separate issue. Right now, we're moving forward as is with the open space per, the special permit and the plans. That would be something that either Matt and Matt and Mark would come in with. Or in the future, if it's, if it's something that, that would be entertained to change. We're not coming before you for that now. We're just coming before you for the fact that we just need to get building permits done so we can build homes and sell them. There's been no changes, there's no changes to the roadway grading or the, the parking for the open space in the field. There's been zero changes to that at this time. And then at this time, there's no changes proposed to the open space. That would be coming if it were to be pursued.
Larry?
Well, you know, certainly any change to the use of the open space would be a major modification, require a public hearing. Would, my only hesitation here, I, I mean, from what I can see that the proposed changes to exclusive use areas five through nine are probably minor modifications. But I'm a little troubled by that. It looks like we may be looking at major modifications to one through four, and I just don't know how that would how these would impact one another.
Like, I guess what we would do is, a- any design of one through four, we pursue that not to be a major mod. Unless we are, well, we might, at that point, maybe we'd package it with the reuse of the open space or something. One through four would be basically modified. So we'd maintain the existing. The concern was the swell in the section in the screening. So these would be the layout in layout of those would be modified so they basically maintain that section on the swell in the plan north.
But would any of that impact the drainage on five through nine?
No, no, because you have a crowned roadway. So it's absolutely two separate distinct drainage areas with this project. You have, you have the, you have the north half of the road and the south half of the road.
May I speak?
Sure, go right ahead.
So, you know, before it was going to be house by house on grading. To come in and get an approval on the grade, we, we made a decision to grade the entire right side, the Colby side in one shot. That water is separate and distinct from the south side, which is tender crop. And to conform on lots one through four is simple. Once I understand what the seven foot easement becomes. If we had to shift again, it could, it would all conform and we'd be able to grade and drain everything on that south side. But we're not asking for anything one through four. We're coming to, instead of coming to lot by lot, we're coming to with all five lots. And that drainage is totally separate from one through four. We're not asking for release of everything, just the right side, that's it. And Joe Sawaka looked over that with a fine tooth comb from the old grading plan. And it conforms, water gets from the top to the bottom. And on that, and then, then at the end of that, we still have to create an as-built when we're all done. To make sure what we drew is what we built. So again, we're only looking five through nine, the open space is as approved at this point. And if we did come in for a major modification, we know that it would be a public hearing and all. And if the board didn't like it at that point, then we would go, we would stick with the decision that we have. So there's no changes or anything to that. It's just the grading five through nine.
I understand what you just said, and Mark, I appreciate that five through nine doesn't seem to be much of a change after peer review has reviewed it. And I'm, when you are speaking and indicating that these are beginning, coming in one at a time, I was watching a planner and our planner is of the opinion that was not the case at all, and I don't want to get into a
Absolutely.
diversion to, to another position. Five through nine, you're asking for, you're telling us that something's in the works for one through four, and you just said something's in the work for the open space. With that, these are moving pieces, and if you articulate to the board tonight, they're moving pieces. Does it make sense for this board to look at things piecemeal? We should look at the entire modification you want to do that, and then we can make a determination whether this is minor or major.
I, I, Peter, I could have left what it, probably what I should have done, I just left those, left the four units off the plan. Just left them blank, I, I, you know, that's probably what I should have done. Because this was, it was absolutely crystal clear when we were going through this. That the units were not the final units and that would be coming in unit by unit. It was fully clear when I went through that, that's how it was understood.
That's it, that's all we're talking about is five through nine.
This is a whole different ballgame that, okay, now, now you have to read, you have to, you, you end up a full, this is completely different, oh, now, now you got to make sure they can, entire site. Each unit is complete, that, that was not how it was discussed at the meeting. Absolutely wasn't how it was discussed at the meeting.
Correct.
It is the way the decision was written, I know that we did discuss doing it one by one at one point, but the
And it was never discussed any other way.
No other way.
No, condition eight specifically says that it will be constructed in accordance with the approved plan, so. We, we seem to have a disconnect here, but.
We absolutely do, I remember that clearly, absolutely remember that clearly.
Absolutely.
Clear as day.
So Steve, we had a number of conversations over a very long period of time with this project. And there might be a course that, excuse me, there might be a conversation that was crystal clear at one point in time. However, the decision is what the decision is. And the decision is what is recorded. So that is what this board has to go by.
So Martha, please read that portion of the grading.
A decision?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, this is, I'm going to have to pull it up on my screen here to read it. So that condition eight states exclusive use area grading plans, all grading on exclusive, exclusive use areas.
And plural.
Right, sorry. But that was C, C one and two, two. All grading on exclusive use areas one through nine shall be done in accordance with the approved OSRD grading drainage plan sheet. C one point two one and C one point two two of the approved OSRD condominium site plan. So that was the final plan that we had to ensure that stormwater drainage patterns as designed are not altered or adversely impacted during or after construction.
So that's what this board it has for our, our guidelines right now. And so that's why I'm asking you what your intention is with this, with the total project in, in total. So we can understand what the intention here, that way that this board can then understand whether this is going to be a minor modification or a major modification. And what I've heard is that there's something in the works for a couple of weeks with one through four, and there's something in the works with a couple of weeks with the open space. And if that's the case, that's fine, but the board needs to have all the, all the information comprehensively packaged, so that we can then make a decision whether this is a minor modification or a major modification. So I'm asking that you be considered to what the board needs to do with this process based upon the decision. As the decision's recorded, as Martha just read it. It's not to give you a hard time, it's just that.
You guys are.
This is, this.
I'm going to bite my tongue here, that's for sure.
We're, we're looking for five building permits on the right side and the grading's exactly the same. Peter, we have five people ready to purchase.
I understand what you're saying.
All is we're looking to do is get five building permits. This has nothing to do with the left side or the open space out back, because the open space out back, if there was something that was brought to you. It would be an easy situation of, no, we like it the way it is, well, we might consider the agricultural, that has nothing to do with tonight. Five through nine grading is exact to what Joe Sawaka wants. And it's releasable. And that's the only, we were only asked, it was a last minute asking too. Could we have the peer review engineer check the grading? It was a grading issue, so the grading now conforms five through nine. We don't even need to touch one through four right now. It's just five through nine, that's it.
Okay, here's one way we can do this, is, okay, right now, the, what I would say is one through four. The houses right now are per the, per the original plan, that's what we're proposing now at this point. We're not changing those.
So what you told the board a few minutes earlier, that something's in the.
No, but, well, that's what I, well, that's what I should have done, I should have had those four come in there and then we, we, everything would be, would be great.
I just want, I just want the accurate information, the truth here.
We're trying to give it to you, but you guys.
Do exactly what.
We're giving, well, that's what we're trying to do right here, is give you the accurate information.
Okay.
But you, you kind of, it, it, it seems like there's always been something about this, that it seems to be held to a different standard than any other project that I've seen in Uber.
Thirty-four months to date on this project. And all as we're coming in for now, a grading, that's it. It's, it's on a one to 10, it's a two as far as asking, and it conforms to what Sawaka wants, and that was it. And we never knew it was coming to the planning board, chose to work, it just had to make sure that the grading, the water got from the top to the bottom. And we've conformed, so we're here with the board now to get five through nine released. The next maneuver would be one through four. We're doing five at a time instead of coming in nine times for nine different lots, we're coming in two times. And at the end of this, the place is as-built, it's within an inch of what the grades are. And then you get to see the as-built versus the actual.
Larry, do you want to head any discussion up, and I don't want to have any board members weigh in as to whether they think this is a minor that what is proposed is minor or, or major, if there are any other concerns?
Well, I, I do agree that, that probably the, the discussion on the open spaces for a later time. I, I just don't know. I, I think what's presented tonight for five through nine, I would call a minor modification. Thank you. I just, I just, I'm not an engineer, I just don't know how it fits into what's likely to happen one through four. But I suppose if, if they come before us, something with one through four, then we can address it at that time.
Okay, thank you, George.
Allegedly, it might be a major modification, but item by item, I think it's a series of minor modifications. Joe, in paragraph two of his letter, did say that the plans, portion of the plans for lots seem to be abandoned and made some provisions, so I think you have to look at that paragraph collectively as a board to see what you want to do as a decision tonight or not tonight, whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you, George, Leslie.
My feeling is that there was, it was a long process to begin with. It looked as if it was going to come in as a minor modification, but there have been so many variables thrown across the table during this discussion that I have questions on if it is minor or if it is major. I, if it was originally decided as one at a time. Then I think the applicant should comply to that decision. And not come in and make a show that they're trying to save time for the board by coming in multiple four side. Four, four lots or five lots at a time. I just I don't have a comfortable feeling about this, so I just really feel as if it needs to have a little more, more looksy going through on, on how this to proceed. The open space came up. It was originally, there's stuff on the table for one through four, now that, then that changed. It sounds like they're all set with one through four and it's not going to change. I, it's, it just seems all over the place for me, I can't really grasp onto anything that makes sense at this point in time.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Leslie, Woody, sir.
I have no comment. At this time, I, I, I don't, I don't want to comment on whether I think it's a major or minor modification.
Okay, Mary.
We need a strategy to break through this impasse. We seem to be at cross purposes, these guys want to get this project done, we want to follow the rules and do it right. But we're, we're, we're basically on impasse and I don't know how to break through that. I, I go with anybody's best thinking on it.
Mary, I think you hit it. We're, we're, we're coming to a potential impasse, so we need to figure out a way to negotiate, to navigate through this process. I see three moving pieces, I see one piece being the five through nine, I see the other piece one through four, and I see the open space being a third. I asked, I asked the question of what the big package looks like and I see, can't seem to get an answer. And Larry, I'm, I'm following your lead that I, I also feel that five through nine does not seem to throw up any big concerns or alarms, and I think the grading probably falls in and our peer reviewers is comfortable with that. And if that was all that was going on tonight, I'd say, hey, rock and roll. But I've heard that there's something in the works two to three weeks here, two to three weeks there, which gives me a little bit of a concern, so this is what I'm going to, this is what I'm going to propose to the board. I'm going to suggest that we, we notarize that five through nine of with the understanding that this be a minor modification with the, with requiring the applicant to return back to this board in four weeks with the final package of one through four in the open space so that we can have a, have a wrap up of this project. So that there'll be some momentum in the forward direction and that we can have a full understanding of what the other intentions are here. And I just want to poll people to see if they feel that that's a good direction to go in, while Larry.
So the only thing I, I would add. I, 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 I think you're going in the right direction there, Pete, but whatever the decision is, it ought to be in writing.
Okay.
Okay, and that's going to take time to that, that's going to take time to develop or, you know, to draft. I'm thinking perhaps we could, Martha. If, if you're agreeable, maybe Martha could get started on a decision for five through nine. And I note that they would, that, that the peer reviewer did recommend some additional conditions on that. And then ask, so that's going to have to come, that decision is going to have to come back for the board for review. And would ask the applicant at that time perhaps for some more information on particularly on what's planned for one through four. And that might inform our decision because we'd still have to take a vote of approval on the, on the decision.
Okay, so are you suggesting that that take place in two weeks or four weeks, Larry, what's your thought?
I defer to Martha on that in terms of her.
You know, this.
Actually, the developers as well.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to pull building permit, you know, it's trying to.
Whatever we do, Steve, it needs to be in writing, okay, and we don't have that in front of us right now. For everyone's protection, for your protection as well, as well as the boards.
So we do have it in writing, Larry.
Well, you.
I'm just.
You don't have an approval of these modifications as, as minor.
So that's what we're trying to do right now, is we're trying to get five through nine approved as minor modifications so that you can keep a forward momentum with your project and you can sell your, your, your lots. To do that, we're going to have to record a decision, as Larry has suggested, which I think is a great idea, in writing. To have that be achieved, Martha has to have, has to draft that. So I'm now asking the planner, please, whether that can be done in two weeks or four weeks, okay?
I think we can do it, I think we can do it in two weeks.
Okay, Larry, I, I appreciate your, 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 your recommendation on this being documented in writing as a minor modification, I just want to poll the board, make sure they're comfortable with that. George, you comfortable with that, sir?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, Leslie?
Yes.
Wonderful, Woody?
Yes.
Wonderful, Mary?
Yes, I agree with Pete's proposal and I agree that it should be in writing, so that. Yes, I agree with Pete's proposal and I agree that it should be in writing. So that, that seems the solution to me.
Okay, and this gives an opportunity to, for you folks to let us know what's going to be going on with one and four in the open space. So that we can figure out if this is going to continue as a minor modification or if we have to open up a boat carrying.
Does that make sense, Steve?
Well, it's, I guess I feel a little put out just for the fact that. I guess when we went through the original process, it was just great, you know, the, it was going to be a technical review. Only and now it's. In, and I guess that each, none of the buildings were, we knew that the buildings weren't the final buildings and. Now we're kind of going back through the, back through it, but if, if we can be held, if we can hold it to two weeks and we hold up our end of the bargain and. We can get, get that decision done. You really don't, I don't think. You know, really, well, the only thing Peter's looking for is for Martha to sign off on the building permit is really, that's it and.
Is that correct, Peter? No, no, no. The reason that we're here is because there was a change from what was approved. That then, our engineer said there's something, our peer review said there's something going on here that's different than what was approved. Therefore, you're here tonight to talk with us about that, to tell us about that, which is what you're doing. You're telling us about what you want to do, which is helpful. We have a decision that we're bound to. There are some changes that have been made to that, so now the board has to negotiate, as I said, for. That process. So we, we've done our job. You're trying to do your job and make modifications within it, I understand. And so we're just trying to make it all work.
I, may I speak?
Sure thing.
Okay, so there's been no changes to the project, none. As far as the open space, that might be the underlying problem right now. We'll take that right off the table. There is no open space change. We're talking about lots five through nine that need strictly. A grading approval that the peer review engineer has done. We're not here for one through four. On the next meeting, we'll be here for one through four on that. And we will not make a change to the open space. But the open space was not even part of this meeting today. It wasn't part of the meeting. We were only looking to get the grading established on five through nine. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I appreciate your comments.
So, Pete, can we get a consensus here on what we've agreed to tonight?
And so just to summarize.
Steve are on board.
Right, so to summarize, Mary, Martha's going to be drafting. A decision from, with regards to what has been decided tonight on the, on five through nine being not a. Major modification but a minor modification, the applicant's going to return to us. We should have that draft done so that the board can sign off on that in two weeks. The applicant indicated they're going to have information for us with regards to one through four at our next meeting. And the applicant has now advised us that there's nothing on the table with regards to the open space. So I think what we've done is even though maybe it's been a painful tooth, tooth pulling process, Steve. We have defined what now, what's now going on with the plan and what won't, what, what will happen with the plan and what won't happen with the plan. And that's what the board needs to know. We just need to know, you know, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, so in two weeks, in two weeks when we. And then, well. We, I guess, so from that process, like, okay, they're happy with the, you know, they're happy with what they're doing on one through four. Then how, so now we got a, we have a draft decision, review decision, but, but, you know, how much longer before. Mark can go in and pull a building permit?
In two weeks.
I can't, I can't answer the question. All that I'm trying to do is allow this board to do what it's supposed to do. And we have the constraints of what the decision is. And so, you know, and we're following the decision.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, that, yeah, I can dwell on it. It's, we just, we're in passes where I completely disagree.
We're not in an impasse. We're in a forward direction because we have a plan. Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, so one last question, Peter. For two weeks from now, there will be a draft decision by Martha on the release of five through nine.
If all goes well, there'll be a draft decision. The board can vote on that and then you're going to let us know if there's going to be anything going on with one through four. That's what you just agreed to.
Yep.
Right? And then, and then you've also indicated there's not going to be anything happening with the open space. Right, so that, that's helpful to the board to know that, this, that hopefully that there's nothing major going on, so we don't have to open another public hearing. We can make these modifications as minor modifications, so that you can go on with your project without another public hearing. Okay, very good. Martha, did you have anything to add to our discussion?
See, only, I'm just checking the performance guarantee and I know that there's a tripartite in the works right now. Performance covenant language. Says no building permits exclusive of unit 10 shall issue until the construction of the access drive. An installation, municipal services necessary to adequately serve all dwelling units. Have been completed in the manner specified in the aforementioned plan. So I think we may be talking about. Possibly two separate things. One is. Approving the grading changes from one through five, but it's also tied to this, this covenant. And the installation of this municipal services and construction of the roadway. So. Are, will those be. Complete in time if you're asking for release so that you can pull permits for one through five through nine, sorry. Will those be complete in two weeks?
What's that, Martha?
The roadway and the installation of municipal services, which all need to be complete before you can pull building permits according to the covenant.
The road right now is 50% complete. It's fully accessible. So. Before an occupancy would be given, the road would be completely up to standard, but you're saying to us now that. Because the road is all subgraded in. It'll have final gravel on it. What you want every. Every. Every utility and working condition at the start of a house?
I'm just reading what's in the covenant, which says that the municipal utilities need to be complete, so I would assume that would be the mains.
You know, right now the water is 90% complete, drainage is 80%, the sewer is 90%. The place is all subgraded. April 1st, we start the septic system. Probably third week in April, that'll be complete. So that would have really nothing to do with actually constructing the homes. They don't need services for months.
Well, if I can interject, I think in a sense you're talking at cross purposes and it's important to remember. Neither Martha nor this board issue building permits. Okay, that's the building commissioner. So I think what you're saying, Martha, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that even if. You get the approval for the minor modifications, you still have to meet the other requirements for building permit.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was trying to say because I heard Mark say something about release and so.
Right, we don't issue building permits.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
Okay, so. Okay. Any of the board members have any other questions or concerns at this point in time? Okay, so we, I think we have some marching orders. We have a direction to go into. Steve, this will hopefully help, give you better directions to where we need to go and we will see you, I guess, in two weeks.
Hey.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Let's see, old business. Martha, where are we with our multi-family zoning requirements for our MBTA communities?
Um, so as I mentioned, MVPC hosted a webinar that was. Given by Secretary Kenealy on the multifamily. Zoning requirement and, you know, bit by bit, things are getting clarified. I think some, some of the, some of the issues that we've raised about numbers and so on, those aren't in the guidelines. Those are in the legislation, really. You know, the minimum of 750 based on 15 units per, you know, per acre for 50 acres. So. So. If, if, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, I would suggest going to the website, the link that I sent you and the frequently asked questions. I think that helps clarify some of these things. One of the thing that, one of the things that has been clarified is that you don't need to have all of these. Units in, in the half mile radius from the train station, half of them have to be there. And this is also not a mandate to construct. You just have to provide the zoning. So, you know, the fact that we have, we don't have water and sewer infrastructure near the train station. Except on the other side of the bridge. You know, really doesn't come into play in terms of the zoning. You know, if a developer wants to come in and actually try to develop something in that district. Then, you know, they'll have to work out the water and sewer issues. So, not sure what else to say about it. We do need to schedule a presentation to the select board. Talked with Tracy about the possibility of doing that before the comment period is over. And again, the comment period ends on March 31st.
Okay, thoughts, Larry?
Martha, you had mentioned getting some help from MVPC. You know, about identifying. You know, buildable parcels. Is that? Is that still a possibility?
Um, yeah, I think there are a number of resources for help. MVPC is very much, you know, out there in front. With help that they can provide to the towns with their GIS and all of that stuff. And they've also put together a draft presentation for the select board, you know, sort of a general one that we can modify. We also do have one from town council, so look at kind of piecing those together. But MVPC can provide help and this is down the road. You know, it's not something that we need to do by March 31st, but. They'll provide us help. Mass Housing Partnership can also provide us help. They have resources, so I think. There are a lot of resources and of course town council will be guiding us as well. So there are a lot of resources as we move forward.
Though, are there any particular requirements for the presentation to the select board other than it be made?
No, I think it basically needs to outline the. The particulars of the zoning requirement and sort of why it's, why, why they've put that requirement in place. But that's really about it.
And is that something you anticipate we should do as a board at a convened meeting with the select board?
Um, that's a good question. I'll ask town council that question and see. How some of their other communities are doing it. Now, I don't know if it's, you know, just planning staff or if it's the planning board or, or who. Is doing it. And I think in terms of the, you know, the comment period, probably it would make most sense for. You know, for a letter to come from the town. They have the comments that everybody provided last time, which I could start to put together into a letter. Again, probably with some input from, from council and MVPC also is going to be compiling concerns that they've heard, which. You know, some, which will be relevant for us. So, you know, I think right now we're all trying to get a, get a handle on this and. You know, as, as we learn more, some of it becomes maybe a little bit easier. But. You know, it's still a complicated thing that, you know, does have ramifications for every community that's.
Very.
It's subject to it.
Well, thank you and folks, if we can all just kind of check out the links that were sent so that we can better inform ourselves. So that we can along with what we need to do with this. Okay, thank you, Martha. So I think we have to our planners directors report, Martha, we are.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much else there is to say, really. Things, we do have some pre-construction conferences coming up for the. Parker River Environmental Studies Building, the governors and John Collins Tony has also requested to have. The pre-construction meeting that's going to be next, the week after next, so that he can start construction on 108 Main Street.
Okay. So those two projects will be moving forward, okay? Very good, very good. All right. Larry, you've, you've started to review some minutes, I understand. Okay, they'll be sent. Okay, good. All right, very good, very good. And we have, where are we with minutes right now, Martha, with regard for 3321?
Right, so those were distributed for the last meeting, but not in time for everybody to read them. I don't know if anybody's had a chance for this week. And we also do have minutes from the last meeting, the February 16th meeting.
With regards to minutes for the two, two 16. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at those?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, which ones are we talking about now?
Two 16.
The last meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
See you, George. Bless you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Yeah, the February 16th, 2022 minutes look fine to me.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then. Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Discussion, Woody? No. George, here, discussion?
George left.
Okay. Let's see his name. Mary, any discussion?
No.
Okay, Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful chairs in favor as well. Beautiful. Anything else for this evening, Martha? Or do I see that word adjournment there?
What about the other set of minutes? The other set of minutes of 3321 minutes.
3321. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Is there a motion then for the 3321 minutes?
Well, actually I have two minor corrections.
Please, sir. Yep.
If you look on page two under B, public hearing, site planner review application, yada, yada, yada. It says lots 154 and 154. I think that should be 154 and 155. And that is also repeated on page seven, same. Same error, cut and paste.
Wonderful.
Other than that, they look fine to me.
All right, is there a motion then? Thank you, as amended. And there's a second, thank you very much. Discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you, discussion, Leslie. Woody, discussion? Wonderful, Mary, discussion. Thank you. Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful chairs in favor as well.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mary, Leslie did.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, is there, have I wrapped up all that business, Martha?
I think so.
Okay. Put my check marks there. Very good. I don't think there's any other business on our agenda tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, I think there's a, is there that word adjournment down there? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second? Wonderful, thank you, Larry. On the, on the, any discussion on the motion, Larry?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Wonderful, Woody, discussion?
No.
Thank you, Mary, discussion? Wonderful, Larry, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Thank you. Cheers in favor as well. Everyone, thank you very much for your participation in tonight's meeting and all of your support. Thank you very much, Martha.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.